And who seconded that?
I'm glad to.
Councilwoman Hearst, are there any, I don't think there's any discussion. He's ill. Yes.
Okay. He's ill and apologizes to the council and the public for not being able to be here this afternoon.
And let's do roll call.
Dutra.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Hearst.
Aye.
Montesino.
Yes.
Kitos Carter.
Aye.
And Parker.
Yes.
The motion carries.
So I did that kind of in a backwards term, so maybe we should do roll call now officially.
Of course.
Since we're all here.
Dutra.
Dutra, you can say here.
Garcia.
Here.
Hearst.
Here.
Montesino.
Here.
Kitos Carter.
Here.
And Parker.
Here.
We have four.
Thank you. All right, today for the pledge of allegiance, we have one of our amazing resources for our community, and that's the Watsonville Chamber. So if you would approach over here to the dais, turn that on. And after we do the pledge, then we'll give you a few moments to talk about what the chamber does.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Everybody will stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank you very much for coming here today, leading us in the pledge. And if you could introduce the wonderful people with you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor Parker and City Council. We thank you for inviting us. And with me, I have our office manager, Brenda Rackley, and I also have our board member, John Cagavine is with me today. And we just want to say thank you. We are the organization that represents the businesses of the Paharo Valley. It's our honor. We want to say thank you to Lowell and Wendy Hearst. They are our lifetime achievement members this year. And we want to invite everyone to join us at our annual awards dinner. It's going to be this July 30th at the Crissetti Hall at the Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds. We're going to be honoring some wonderful people. Ken Shuan is our man of the year. Renee Mello is our woman of the year. Driscoll's is our business of the year. Event of the year is the Santa Tour by the City of Watsonville. And our organization of the year is the Community Foundation of the Santa Cruz County. So we want, and again, lifetime achievement goes to Wendy and Lowell Hearst for giving just really a lifetime of dedication to serving our community. We thank you so much. And it's my honor. Thank you so much for inviting us.
Oh, sure. And can anybody join the chamber?
Anybody can join the chamber. If you want to join as an individual, we're happy to welcome you. We have events that are going on all the time. We offer networking opportunities, opportunities for people to get to know each other. They are open, they're free to the public, our mixers are. We have one, in fact, hosted by the Saco, which is this Thursday. And we also do ribbon cuttings, which we love to welcome new businesses to Watsonville. We have one at Evan Darling this Friday at 5:00. We invite everyone to join us and just celebrate new businesses and opportunities to network and get to know one another.
Where's the Saco one going to take place?
The Saco one is at the Knights of Columbus building, which is at 230 East Lake Avenue. It's going to be from 5 until 7. We have great raffle prizes. And again, it's just a great opportunity to learn about businesses and organizations.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you so much.
Very much appreciate it. Okay, we're moving on to informational items. A report of disbursements. Does anyone have any questions in regards to that? Seeing no questions. Moving along to miscellaneous documents report. I don't. And written reports by council members regarding actions taken on their regional commissions, board meetings that may affect the city of Watsonville, if any. Does anybody have a report to speak to? Okay. We're moving on then to presentations and oral communications. We will, this time is set aside for members of the general public to address council on any item, not on the council agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item except presented, except that any council member may respond to the statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting or referred to staff for clarification and report. Speakers are asked to fill out a speaker card and leave it at the podium. Speakers are asked to announce their name and the district in which they live in in order to obtain an accurate record for our minutes. So at that, I will open oral communications from the public. If you'd approach the podium, please.
First of all, as many of you are either currently teachers or former teachers, I do think that we need to hold a moment of silence for the 14 children, elementary school children and their teacher who were murdered today, this afternoon in Uvalde, Texas. This has happened so many times, it's becoming a little bit too, a little bit too regular. And even though, you know, we're not Uvalde, Texas, because of the fact this happens in a little town in Texas, I have to tell you folks, it could happen here. We need to recognize we have a real problem with guns. We've got ghost guns. I've already talked to you about sponsoring a resolution to get rid of them and gun registration. And we need to basically reclaim our nation from the wave of gun violence that's just washing over us and reject the National Rifle Association. The other thing I wanted to talk about this evening, a little bit, I wanted to thank Deputy Chief Sims for his presentation just less than an hour ago at our beautiful clubhouse in Paharo Village about 8:41 and the five different classifications of weapons that the police might choose to use and wanted to discuss with the seniors there. And so again, I really thank the police department for being so very proactive and interacting and being very transparent with the senior community. It really is important because it really does help demystify the police department, and it actually brings us together. This is important. It's very important that the police department and the citizens understand their roles, understand what's expected on either side. And also, it helps us understand what new weapons that, some of us who are rather elderly, me being 69, to find out what they are. I also want to remind, please do run the gay pride flag, the rainbow flag, all during the month of June at front of the city hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Welcome. Yes, it's all yours.
Good evening, council members. My name is Caesar Rodriguez. I am a junior at Watsonville High School and a city resident of the city of Watsonville. I am also a member of Friday Night Live, which is a positive youth development program that is asking youth to take action on tobacco waste in Watsonville. I am here to share with you that we are passionate about addressing the devastating impacts of tobacco waste in our community. We thank you for your leadership so far by passing the resolution back in September of 2021, recognizing tobacco waste as a public health and environmental threat to the residents of the city. We are now asking for your help to partner with us on the next steps to identify a policy solution. Cigarette butts are the most littered item on the planet and the number one litter found on California roads and beaches and rank among the most common types of marine debris found in the US with over 135 million pounds of littered butts every year. Tobacco waste is also a serious problem where I live in Watsonville. I see people smoking in front of restaurants, recreational centers, and meeting in front of my school, and then tossing their butts into the street. Cigarette butts release hundreds of chemicals, including nicotine and arsenic, which are getting into our waterways, polluting our local wetlands, beaches, and getting into our soil where we grow so much of our food. In April of this year, the Tobacco Product Waste Policy Toolkit was published by the Public Health Law Center, and we are counting on the city of Watsonville to continue prioritizing staff time towards these exciting and strategic partnerships. For those of you whose terms are ending, we wanted to make sure to thank you for your dedication to this issue over the years, and we ask you to please help us make sure that future council members and city leadership understands the importance of collaborative effort to find a policy solution. Thank you for letting me present today.
Thank you very much. If you have any literature or any information, if you leave that right over here for us, that would be great. That's good, too. Any kind of contact that we could, thank you very much. You can grab that microphone. It'll bend. There you go.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Monica Velazquez. I am a student at Carrillo College and a representative of Friday Night Live. We need your help keeping our entire watershed, including our beautiful city parks, wetlands, Paharo River, beaches, and oceans from becoming big ashtrays. Cigarette butts dropped on the ground anywhere in our community can end up in the water system, which pushes them out to the ground anywhere in our community and onto our beaches where wildlife can ingest them. These cigarette butts are made of cellulose acetate, a man-made plastic material, and contain hundreds of toxic chemicals. That is why it is so important to regulate the impact of tobacco waste, since it can be very harmful and toxic to wetland and ocean life such as fish, birds, turtles, and sea mammals. So I'm asking you to please help us prioritize tobacco waste and identify a policy solution to regulate its impact. According to the state water board's trash amendment, the city of Watsonville is tasked with preventing pollution in our stormwater system and addressing debris the size of cigarette butts. The Tobacco Product Waste Model Policy Toolkit was recently published by the Public Health Law Center. We ask that the council direct appropriate staff and/or council members to review the toolkit and strategize effective policy solutions for the city of Watsonville. Thank you for your leadership on this issue so far and for moving forward to protect the health of our local protected wetland network, freshwater, and marine life and our Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Chase Jacques Maynes. I'm a resident of Watsonville and am the 2023 senior class president of Aptos High. As a member of Friday Night Live, I've had the opportunity to work with youth and adults picking up cigarette butts along the levee and near the Watsonville Plaza. In just two hours, our small group of five was able to pick up over 1,400 cigarette butts from the plaza and downtown area, a place where smoking is illegal, no smoking signs are posted, and trash cans are easily available. While it did feel very worthwhile to be picking up those cigarette butts, it was also very gross. And even though I was wearing gloves and a mask, I experienced a headache halfway through the cleanup and ended up getting sick and missing two days of school, likely from touching all the cigarette butts. At the same time, I know for the people who actually smoke cigarettes, the health detriments are much worse than the effects which I experienced during the cleanup. Cigarette smoke contains over 7,000 unique compounds, including over 70 carcinogenic compounds. Additionally, I know that big tobacco aggressively targets communities of color, making it an especially prevalent issue in Watsonville. Internal documents from big tobacco companies deemed Hispanic communities to be lucrative, easy to reach, and under marketed. As you can see, this is not an innocent issue. Not only is this a matter of environmental concern, but it is also one of racial justice. We'd like to ask you to continue to take a stand against tobacco waste, stand as an ally against discriminatory practices by big tobacco and as a protector of the natural environment. I understand that many of your terms are ending soon. We know it is unlikely you'll have the time to pass legislation on this issue before then. Help us. Help us to get the ball rolling in support of a policy solution before your term ends, and then pass the torch when it does. Thank you, Watsonville City Council.
Thank you, former Bradley Bear.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Baspadilla. I'm the director of Programs and Impact for Community Action Board. As you know, CAB has been the county designated community action agency tasked to eliminate poverty and create social change through advocacy and essential services since 1965. May is Community Action Month. This is why I'm here. It is time for us to reflect on our mission, our partnerships, our values of equity and inclusion, and the difference we have made in our community. In 2021, that looked like serving over 10,000 low-income people with rent assistance to nearly 2,000 people to avoid eviction, including over 400 city of Watsonville residents. Food readiness support and placement assistance to over 500 youth and adults. COVID information to over 1,300 people, including indigenous language speakers, and impacting over 7,800 immigrants, including over 5 million, to city of Watsonville residents with immigration, legal, and education and advocacy services. We sincerely, sincerely thank you, city of Watsonville, for your partnership in funding, support, help CAB, and this type of impact in our community. To celebrate and raise awareness of Community Action Month, CAB is co-sponsoring events highlighting housing issues, immigration voices and experiences, and eliminating resilience in May. CAB will also post highlights of its work in social media on Impact Wednesdays weekly and during the month of May. For more information, please follow CAB in social media or check us out on our website at cabinc.org. On behalf of Marilena de la Garza and all the staff, we want to thank you very much for your time and your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Hernandez. I'm from District 3. Just jump right in. So with the current housing crisis and home affordability, it has become almost impossible for everyday families in Watsonville to purchase a home. California sees the imbalance of who is buying homes in the market and passed SB 1079, which is part, prevents bulk sale of foreclosed homes to investor groups. Speaking to some agents, many homes are being bought by investor groups in Watsonville. Homes I myself have, my hot, homes I myself have researched bought six months ago are back on the market, being sold by a business entity, usually for $150,000 more than purchase price. It's impossible for families to compete in this market, in Watsonville. Why am I saying all of this? The ask is for the city of Watsonville to look into creating zoning for single-family homes to be for families and prevent ownership of those homes under a business entity. Housing is a basic human necessity, and a business plan should not be prioritized over our community's basic necessities. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we move forward, Friday Night Live, do you guys have contact information other than your name that you left on it? Do you have who your, do you have it? Okay, they have it. Thank you very much. That's what I needed to know. All right, is there anybody else in the public who would like to approach and speak on things that are not on the agenda? All right, at this time, we'll move to the council, and we'll start with Councilwoman Kitos Carter.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here with us, here in person and virtually. Have a lot tonight. So I attended a meeting with the Salvation Army on May 11th, and I also attended a board meeting with families in transition on May 11th. We are looking for board members for families in transition. If you're interested, you can visit the website at fitstancacruz.org to learn more about what we do. On May 14th, I attended the 25th Annual Queer Youth Leadership Awards. It was really beautiful. It was at Watsonville High. It was a really wonderful celebration. I was there with council member Dutra. On May 17th, I donated blood to the Red Cross at the Community Health Trust of Watsonville. We're currently experiencing really low levels of blood, so if you're able to donate, I encourage you to do so. May 18th, I attended a CAB board meeting along with Paz, hi Paz. And today, the 24th, I got my dog spayed at the Santa Cruz County Animal Shelter, so please remember to stay away from your pets. And it is graduate season, so congratulations to all the 2022 graduates. And there's colds and flus still going around, so make sure to wash your hands, sanitize, and wear your masks. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hearst.
Thank you very much, mayor. And I want to thank the Friday Night Live crew and their advisors for being here and reminding us of health issues and addiction issues in the community. You know, today I was fortunate enough to have lunch with our Sister City delegation. Not an official visit, but they were just in town. They're from San Pedro Masuwat in El Salvador. And you can look at that proclamation on the wall as you exit the room here. And that leads me to reflect upon the Sister City relationship we have all over the world and the great opportunities that we have to bridge cultural gaps and knowledge gaps and make friends with folks that do have a connection with us in one way or another. And so I encourage everyone to think about our sister cities when we're allowed to travel and have an opportunity to visit with our, the close associations that we have. There's going to be, the federal trade The Federal Trade Commission has a Senior Citizen Medicare Alert Portal, which you'll have to look up from the Federal Trade Commission, but the AARP is going to have a Medicare Scam Alert webinar Wednesday, tomorrow, and I believe the time is two to three Eastern Time. And so for folks that are interested in Medicare and senior scams, which there's plenty of scams out there all over, take a look at that. I wanted to thank the chamber, but I didn't have the chance for the acknowledgement that they, my wife and I, have received for what they call a Lifetime Achievement Award. I want to say that it is a great honor, but I'm not done yet.
All right.
That's it for my time.
Okay. Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I attended nine meetings, both virtual and in-person. And Mayor, I have two things that I'd like to report, and I might go just a little bit over my two minutes.
Okay.
And so I ask you...
Thank you for giving me the heads up.
Thank you very much. For those of you that know me, you know that I'm an ardent supporter of voting. I recently attended a virtual meeting hosted by staff from Secretary of State Dr. Shirley Weber and our Santa Cruz County Clerk Tricia Weber. I learned that Santa Cruz County will be one of twenty-eight counties that will be using the Voter Choice Act for this year's June and November election. What that means is that our ballots are by mail, and we will be able to go to several voting centers to vote if we do not want to return our ballot by mail. ZIP Code Area 95076 will have three drop-off boxes and four voting centers, including City Hall. There is no voting center assigned to each one of us. Instead, we can go to any one of the centers that is available. So for specific locations, you can contact our city clerk, Erwin. I had the privilege of joining Tammy from Public Works at a PVUSD Board Meeting to present Seventeen School Waste Reduction Hero Awards to seventeen students, faculty, and staff. The Hero Awards are given to those that go above and beyond to reduce organic waste at their schools. Food is recycled into compost, which reduces landfill waste and greenhouse gas emissions. We are proud of those schools that are committed to addressing climate change. Other school districts and cities throughout California look to Watsonville as a model for their program, so I'm really proud we have that program here in our city. And that concludes my report, and I made it.
Well, look at you. You did. Thank you. Councilwoman Dutra.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. I want to say thank you to Friday Night Live, Tefanell, for being here this evening. I do see some of my students in there as well, so hi, yes, I see you guys. And thank you for being here and being a part of this. So less than two weeks left of school. I'm sure everyone's excited about that. I also want to say last week was Classified Workers Week, so to all of our classified workers, thank you. I see you. You guys all work very hard for our school district, and I appreciate all the hard work that you put into our schools, so thank you very much. I attended the PVPSA Heroes Awards, and I want to say congratulations to Claudia Mel for the Lifetime Achievement Award. So well-deserving. She's been giving back to our community for so many years, and she's a founding member for PVPSA, which is in alignment with what you all do, so that's great. I also wanted to say we have a few things coming up. Happy congratulations to all the graduates, all the eighth graders who are promoting. Congratulations to you as well. Happy Memorial Day. You will not be back here before then. Happy Pride, that's just in a few days as well. Remember to vote. All these things are happening before our next meeting, so I wanted to make sure that this was all being said. Also, congratulations to my friend, Erica Padilla Chavez, for being the Woman of the Year for our Assembly District. I am so proud of her, and she does just so much. And congratulations for being the new CEO for Second Harvest, so good luck, Erica. I also want to say that I went to the PV Annual Gala that was held here for the school district. That was really nice. I went to the Quila Awards with Councilmember Kidos Carter. It was great to see our youth put on this amazing evening. And I just want to say happy summer, everybody, and have a very, very good and safe June and July. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Montesino.
Yeah, welcome, everyone. Today, Lo and I had lunch with, like where he said, with a small delegation from San Pedro Mosuwat del Salvador, where I met with Mayor Alberto Ramos Rodius, where he wanted to rekindle our Sister City status with the city. And with that in mind, he gave me a letter inviting us over whenever we can, so I'll pass it on to the city clerk. But I also want to take some time and denounce the violence that happened in Texas, the mass shooting with innocent kids. Put myself in their shoes. Parents, where you think kids are in a safe space? You know, we've got to put a stop to it. We've got to put some legislation, put our congressmen to work to put, you know, some gun control in our... And we can also do something in our community, so I yield the rest of my time for a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to thank Friday, I was going to say Saturday night, Friday Night Live for coming out and for encouraging environmentally protective policy by the city of Watsonville. I know our council's been very active in that, so it's nice seeing that the activity is starting at a grassroots level, and you're bringing that here. And I commend all of you for attending tonight, and for those of you who spoke, and look forward to hearing other speakers next time you come. So I'm not going to go through all my meetings, because anybody who's been mayor will tell you there's tons of meetings and lots of places to go. I do want to address what Mayor Protem just said about a couple of things, about we're going to go back. I'm a teacher. I teach in an elementary school. So tomorrow, we're going to go back, and the kids that didn't know will know about what happened today. And they will have questions, and they will have, just like we all did, for those of us that are old enough in an earthquake, we'll all start looking for exits immediately because it's a part of how can I get out of here as fast as I can? What can I do? And it's sad that that, among all the other things, that that's what we're going to have to do, but those will be part of our discussions. We will, well, I will, continue to pray and think for those, sending thoughts for those people that are survivors, because there are survivors, and there are people in the hospital, and then there are the families of the people who were brutally, their lives were taken. And to segue with, Memorial Day is coming up, and in a time where we remember those people who served our country and who gave their lives, and those who came back and still maybe didn't completely get to come back, and recognizing that there's lots of things we can do to support our veterans in our community. Graduation is taking place, and so many promotions and graduations. And if there are any of you here, do we have any graduating eighth graders or seniors? They're all there? Okay, well, congratulations. Could you stand up? I'd like to give you a hand since you came down. Stand up. Come on, make yourself do it. Any seniors or... There you go. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, thank you. And moving on, from the oral communications, we are going to have a mayor's proclamation recognizing May 2022 as Building Safety Month and encouraging all citizens to express their appreciation for building officials and their important work, which we appreciate here in Watsonville. So Rob Allen, I will meet you at the podium. So this is Building Safety Month, May of '22. Building Safety Month, sponsored by the International Code Council, serves as a yearly reminder of our critical, of the critical role of our code officials in ensuring safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings. And whereas this year's theme, quote, "Safety for All: Building Codes in Action," focuses on planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities, disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a dependable water supply for all. Jeez, I didn't know that. Whereas building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry work year-round to ensure the highest safety standards are met. And whereas these professionals are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together expert, local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials to help create and implement codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. Such codes include safeguards such as hazards, such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wild, not so much here, but yeah, wildlife fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas this month brings an opportunity for us all to acknowledge the essential services provided by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies which aid in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, IRE Parker, Mayor of the City of Watsonville in the state of California, on behalf of the city council, hereby recognize May 2022 as Building Safety Month and encourage all residents to express their appreciation for building officials and their important work. So I will hand this to you, Rob.
Okay, she wants a picture first. Here. Or I can hold it for you if you want to.
Everybody, I just want to let you know I have Paul Manley here. He's our building inspector, so he's come with us for the meeting tonight and the proclamation, so we're happy to have Paul here as well. So I just want to remind everybody on the proclamation, we had four essential weeks that we did Building Codes in Action was the theme, "Safety for All." And May 1st through the 8th was Energy and Innovation is what we focused on. May 9th through the 15th was Building Safety Careers. Worked on trying to provide some career assessment and outreach to some individuals that might want to become inspectors and building officials. May 16th through the 22nd was the Disaster Preparadis is what we worked on that week, which is this week here. And then May 23rd through the 31st was Water Safety. So those were the four areas that basically we focused on, and we do appreciate everything that the mayor, Honorable Mayor and council members are providing us the proclamation this week, and this is for the month, so we thank you very much for acknowledging that.
Thank you, Rob.
As Rob said, I'm Paul Manley. I'm one of your building inspectors, Jose Perez, you're probably more familiar with, a Watsonville-grown building inspector. I had a chance to, I had a chance yesterday to drop off at each one of your departments a bit of information. It was a delightful little package that we put together. It showed our event that we had right across the street in the park. It included the adorable pictures of the Watsonville children, which, at my age, I could only take so much of that. They were just incredible. Anyway, Honorable Mayor, thank you for the proclamation.
Okay, here you go. And thank you. We really appreciate it. We called them Happy Meals, but there was no meal in it. They had little trains on them, and they were wonderful, lots of good information, and we had some wonderful pictures. Yeah, there they are. That's one of them that we had. So very creative. Is there anybody on council that would like to speak to our... Huh? Councilwoman Hearst?
Well, thank you very much, building officials. And, you know, there's a lot of work to be done in Watsonville. There's a lot of inspections that need to take place, and there's hopefully a lot of building that's going to take place in Watsonville, and I thank you both, and congratulations on the acknowledgement for moving the city forward in a safe and sound way. Thank you.
Counsel... All right, thank you. Thank you both for coming, and thank you for representing. We appreciate it. Moving on to our consent agenda. And all items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions, which are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one consensus motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the consensus motion. The mayor, me, will allow public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. If you would like to speak about the consent agenda, could you approach the podium, public? Seeing no members of the public approach the podium, we will move on to council.
I'd like to move the staff.
The motion?
Consent agenda.
Okay. And do we have a second? Councilwoman Hearst? Are there any questions or comments? Councilwoman Hearst?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 5D, this is commonly called the Freedom Line Plan or something of that nature. It's the Kimberly-Horm extended contract. I just had a couple of questions. We're going to improve Freedom Boulevard, and I believe this is from Green Valley to the city limits, but the city limits on one side of the street is different than the city limits on the other side of the street. And, well, it's my hope that we can do the whole project, but it's going to benefit the county residents as well, and so I want to make sure that, you know, we've had ample opportunity to reach out to our partners in the county and those residents there, so that they'll know what's happening and how it's going to happen. And I don't mind serving those residents in the county, because we drive on that road too. But I kind of wonder, you know, how the county is going to participate or how those residents will participate if we're, if we need to acquire property, or if we are putting in sidewalks, bike lanes, you know, and kind of get a timeline for how this is going to go. It's an important thoroughfare through our community, and I think public needs to be fully informed as to what the plans are.
Did you need further clarification right now?
I would like some clarification as to what our relationship is with the county over the roadway that's not within the city limits.
Okay, looks like we have an expert walking to the podium. Okay, expert?
Good evening. Maria Esther Rodriguez. Although I would defer to Maria as being the expert, but I can be here gladly answering any questions. We have indeed reached out to the county to talk about this project, being that that is our border. Any work that we will do will be definitely within the city limits. That's our purview, but we coordinate with them so that if we can best use construction times, disturbances, et cetera, to do any work on the county side versus the city side. We'll coordinate with them. It wouldn't be work done by the city. We have reached out to them. There hasn't been anything finalized as of yet. It is a plan line, has been very iterative, because as you mentioned, one of the items that we look at is property and where the right-of-way is going to lie and what's going to be included within that roadway and what we can include. So it's working with the property owners along those segments and also indeed with the county to determine what that final product will be. And that's something that we will definitely bring back to council when that is finalized, so we have a little bit more work to do. It is iterative, so it takes a little bit longer than we would like.
Thank you for sharing those plans with us, and I know... And I know the residents and our friends at the county will also be interested because we can't just build half of the road. It's going to be a full road, right?
Ultimately, anything that gets built has to take into account everything. So we wouldn't just do half of it. We'll coordinate with them and/or determine where those limits would be to be able to proceed with a full project.
Thank you again, and I hope that there will be sidewalks in this plan so that those residents can access the city without having to walk in the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other consent...Mayor Protem?
Yeah, just a comment. Under 5K, I hope we try to encourage these assessment districts to form a, you know, associations. Because, you know, putting our staff through, I think, some time-consuming, it doesn't fare us very well. Doesn't serve us very well, and we don't enter into these agreements in the future. So thank you.
Well, I can think I can support about not moving into these agreements in the future. I'm not sure that you're going to get anybody to move to an association at this point. But this is what the city has taken on. And I know that at Vista Montaña, we will be having a meeting with the Vista Montaña folks in the upcoming week or so. And hopefully, that might be something, if one of these El Mads are in your district, to set up a meeting in regards to that. Okay, so any other comments in regards to our consent agenda? All right, roll call, please.
No on I, yes on the rest. Garcia?
No on I, yes on the rest.
Hearst?
Yes on them all.
Montesina?
Yes.
Kiros Carter?
Yes.
And Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. Moving on, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. We move on to public hearings, ordinances, and appeals. Our first one is development permit fees, cost recovery fee policy, and permitting and services fee schedule. This will be a report by Community Development Director Miriam. And she's alone.
I'm all alone.
She's all alone. Okay. It's all yours, Suzy.
Hello, everyone. My name's Suzy Miriam. I'm the director of the Community Development Department. And tonight, I will present three separate items that when put into effect together will allow the city to recover all costs related to processing development applications. In order to charge a developer for costs related to development above and beyond permit fees, we have to modify the municipal code. Then we have to adjust our fee schedule. And finally, we want to have a clear policy that describes how the city will recover development-related costs, and that's the cost recovery fee policy. So the city utilizes professional consultants to prepare environmental documents to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. And in order to be reimbursed for this expense, the city must enter into a reimbursement agreement with developers, which we have been doing in the past several years. The city's municipal code, however, does not provide for recovery of consultant and legal fees required in the review of development projects. And the fee schedule currently does not have a provision that allows the city to enter into these reimbursement agreements with developers to pay the consultant and legal fees. The modification to the fee schedule will allow the city to...to charge developers for this service as well as receive reimbursement for legal fees related to development. So just to start off, I've got on the left our current section of the municipal code that talks about fees. And then on the right, I've got the proposed change. It's not super, super big word-wise, but it's very big when it's implemented. So what this does is that, again, the language added is allows a fee to be established by the cost recovery fee policy adopted by resolution of the council and the fee schedule, both of which may be amended by the council from time to time. Then down lower, every application shall be submitted with any necessary agreement for payment of processing fees which may be required by the cost recovery fee policy. So that is the proposed change to Chapter 1410-1401. And then next, we move on to our fee schedule, which, as you'll see, there are some fees staying the same, some fees taking...going away, and some fees being lowered significantly. So we currently have fees for environmental impact reports and preparation of initial studies and negative declarations. So that $46,000 fee was initially meant to cover staff's time to actually prepare the document. Staff no longer prepares EIRs or mitigated negative declarations because they are way too involved and take experts and in all different matters of environmental regulations. So what we're doing is we're recommending on initial studies and negative declarations that the $67,47 fee go for staff time to manage the project. And then the actual cost would be paid by the developer, and that would be through a reimbursement agreement. So that's why it's $67,47 for staff time and then the cost to actually prepare the document. Similar with EIRs, it's going down to $10,000 for staff time and then the cost to actually prepare the environmental impact report. And that would be worked out with our secret consultants. We have a $2,000 fee. This kind of was a legal cost recovery fee. In our current fee schedule that looks at review of documents, we're taking that out and proposing to replace that with attorney's fees and just being actual cost rather than a set amount. And then finally, the cost recovery fee policy is the roadmap outlining how the department will charge development fees and recover costs associated with processing development applications. First, it allows for staff to determine whether a project should be charged a flat permit fee, which we generally do now, or by reimbursement of an hourly rate. Historically, our fees are pretty good at covering staff time. But if there's a project that comes up that might have very unique circumstances, we may choose to go with the hourly rate instead. Or there may be a project that has a very large fee attached to it, but when we look at the project, we think it's not even going to take that much time. So let's bill on an hourly rate rather than charge this fee. If a development requires an initial study, negative declaration, or any significant environmental work, a reimbursement agreement and security deposit would be required prior to moving the application forward. The reimbursement agreement would also include a mechanism to recover attorney's fees for the project. In the end, any excess from the deposit that remains unspent at the completion of the project would then be refunded back to the applicant. So this action supports the city council's strategic goal of fiscal health by ensuring that the city is charging fees accurately and fairly and recovering costs incurred during the processing of permits for development. And then finally, a portion of this went to the Planning Commission, and that is the modification to our zoning ordinance. So the Planning Commission does recommend that the city council adopt a modification to 1410-1401. And then staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution amending the planning fee schedule and adopting a cost recovery fee policy. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Director Miriam. That's very nice and very clear. Do we have any questions or comments? I was going to call you Congresswoman. There you go. I'm elevating you already.
I can get paid that.
I know, really. Councilwoman Garcia?
Unfortunately, it wasn't clear to me. I need some clarification. I'm not understanding that for the $6,747 fee and the $10,000 fee, there's a $15,000 minimum deposit, which is more than the fee.
Can we go back to that slide?
Sure thing.
Thanks.
Okay. So the minimum deposit that is being referred to right there is the cost for the environmental document to be prepared. So the $10,000 and the $6,700 are to pay for staff time to manage the project. And then that $15,000 minimum deposit is part of paying the consultants for the environmental review.
Oh, got you. Got it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? All right, seeing none. We'll go out to the public. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none at this time, I will come back to the council. This will be done in three separate motions or one fully inclusionary motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So there, I would recommend that you address the ordinance first, and that would be a motion to introduce for first reading only by title and waiving full reading of the text and the ordinance. And then having a vote on the ordinance. And then secondarily, a motion to adopt the resolution, adopting the cost recovery fee policy, and approving a permitting and services fee schedule amendment.
Okay. So we'll do that in two steps then. Okay? And do we have a motion for the first portion?
I'll move that recommendation.
I'll second.
Thank you. So Mayor Protem Montesino made the motion, and Councilwoman Garcia seconded. Are there any other further questions in regards to this? Roll call, please. Oh, sorry.
Just to clarify, I just do want to read the title of the ordinance since it is an ordinance.
That's fine, thank you, Madam Attorney.
So this would be, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Watsonville Amending Part 14 Fees of Chapter 14-10 Administration and Procedure of Title 14 Zoning of the Watsonville Municipal Code Relating to Development Permit Fees." Is that correct that that's the motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and we can move to roll call then.
Dutra?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Montesina?
Yes.
Kiros Carter?
Aye.
And Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. And the second motion would include adopting a resolution amending the planning fee schedule and adopting a cost recovery fee policy. Is that correct? And those are acting on a resolution. Okay, so do we have someone?
I'll move that resolution.
All right.
I'll second.
So I have Mayor Protem and Councilwoman Kiros Carter as a second. Before we take roll call, do we need any clarification, Madam Attorney? Okay, roll call, please.
Madam Mayor, I just have a couple of comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, absolutely.
You know, I think it goes without saying that these fees are all going to be passed on to the applicants and to the public. And I'm wondering how we will inform them of these changes because they're always a big surprise when somebody says, oh, you need a fence permit. And since you want a special fence, then that's going to be an extra $600 and some dollars. So I want us to be able to recover all these fees, but I just don't want to be a conduit for consultants and that are unreasonable. I want to make sure that, you know, the fees actually have a bearing on the amount of work that's being done by staff. And I'm not sure how that separates out from the work that the consultants provide or how we select the consultants. And so it's just...it's a concern that I have that I'm sure that we'll hear about later on. And people will say, hey, well, why didn't you tell us about all these fees? Because it's a long list, and the print's pretty small.
Well, there's something in here, right? In regards to when you get your permit, you get very clearly what your fees are going to be in. You have to pay for your fees at that time? I was looking at one of your...
Correct. Yeah, and let me clarify. The only fees that are actually changing are the ones that are up on the screen. So the preparation of the initial study negative declaration, which would be for a very large project that it looks like it needs environmental review, so not a fence permit. And then the EIR, which is actually lowering. And then we're modifying so that we can collect attorney's fees for these large projects. So none of the other fees on that whole list of the planning fees are changing.
So an ADU? One of the ADU?
Absolutely not. Because I think about Hillcrest or the big developments that have potential environmental impacts.
Remodeling. But it would have to be a large remodeling.
You would have...yeah, no, you'd...yeah, no. It wouldn't be a remodel.
No. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
But thanks for that clarification. I just think there's a lot of folks out there that don't even know that we have permits. And don't bother to pay the fees. And they're not the big projects, but it's those little things that get neighbors upset with other neighbors. And so I'm supportive of the broad changes and maybe some of the small ones too. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, if I may respond. And to Councilmember Hearst's question about transparency, I think that's one of the benefits of adopting a cost recovery fee policy. So for those large projects where there would be an ISMD or an EIR, the applicant, the developer, can review the policy itself and understand what is going to be their responsibility for the project that goes forward.
So in the past, on our cost recovery policy, has the city has been paying things that they then fight to try to get recovered or don't get recovered?
Well, you know, until we got these snappy, smart new city attorneys, we didn't really realize that we weren't allowed to do this. So...
Okay. Weren't allowed to do it, but there wasn't anything in writing. So what we're doing tonight is we're just sort of clarifying.
Yeah, got it.
And clarifying what's been in place for a while and making changes so that it's explicit.
Yes, thank you. Much better.
Great. That should make it a little bit smoother with the permitting processes and the developer's understanding of what's going on. Any other comments or questions or clarifications? Okay, so then we'll go to roll call.
Dutra?
Aye.
Garcia?
Oh, yes.
Hearst?
Aye.
Montesina?
Yes.
Kiros Carter?
Aye.
And Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We do not have any emergency items added to the agenda. Do we have any requests on scheduling future addenda items at this time? Then I shall do a happy moment and say we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Suzy? Suzy, can I talk to you?
Thank you, everyone.
Vanessa, thank you for your good work. We get to observe it.